I'm so disappointed you're here.
Our lives on Monday, July 8th, 2013, South Bend Common Council session. The invocation by Father Dave Portfield. Just bow our heads and pray for God's blessings. God of justice, Lord of truth, Father of all nations and ages, grant that under your providence, the minds and hearts of the members of the South Bend Common Council may be open to the wisdom of your spirit, as well as to the voices of the residents of South Bend, that your will may be done and the common good may be served. Amen.
Amen.
Father of the Constitution and the United States of America, and to the Republic with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John Boardy, will you read the roll please? Mr. Stad from...
Mr. Henry Davis.
Andrew Zier.
Uh, Mr. Schrader, excuse, uh, Dr. Furley.
Dr. Brunner.
President.
Vice President Oliver Davis. Councilmember White.
President.
Mr. Furley here. And Mr. President Deeter. President Mr. Boardy. Thank you, Mayor, the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Well, I don't have it here in front of me, but, uh, I know it was... There's not here yet. Here he is. The Council of the City of South Bend Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the June 24th, 2013 meeting at the Council. The Council members be correct, therefore we recommend the same be approved. Shines Darren Peter, David Brunner. Make motion. Thank you, we have a motion for second, all favor of that. Aye. In the opposition. Thank you. Special business like to announce that Catherine Roos, Chief of Staff, will be representing the city administration tonight. We do not have any reports of city offices, therefore have motion resolved in the committee of the whole. Salute. Second. All in favor of that? Aye. In the opposition.
The committee of the whole is not in session. This is the portion of the conference meeting where bills are given a second reading, a public hearing. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee, where the bill was discussed and the results of their decision will be forthcoming. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member of area plan will be given. In all other situations, a formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee's report. Additional rules governing this portion of the conference meeting is available if you would like to have those copies. I do ask that councilmember or petitioner to give his or her report prior to asking questions. Also, it is at this time that only questions pertaining to the project as before will be allowed to be addressed. In addition, I ask the councilmembers to give me the opportunity to recognize you, so that each councilmember will have opportunity to address their question. At this time, Mr. Boardy, will you please give second reading to Bill 16 dash 14?
I was hearing off your mending the zoning ordinance and requesting a special exception for property located at 3529 and 3527 Western Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46619.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boardy. Uh, is there a report from... Okay.
Councilant district number two in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a report from Mayor Plan?
Committee report present.
Is there a committee report?
Gotcha, we got it.
The Philly extension committee met today and forwarded to the common council, uh, no recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there a report from Mayor Plan?
Assistant Senator of the Area Plan Commission offices on the 11th floor. This property is located on the northeast corner of Western Avenue in Kenmore. Currently on site is an existing convenience store and a single-family home. This zone change is from mixed-use district to the LV, local business district, and also includes a special exception to allow gasoline service station. Just a wider view of Kenmore Street. Site plan shows the existing brick building, convenience store, and shows an additional two pumps. The parking spaces have been moved on-site. There is some landscaping along the Kenmore side and a little landscaping in the front along Western. To the north, our single-family homes, the church zone SF2, single-family and two-family district. To the east of the vacant home, a business front, also zone mixed-use district. To the south is a parking lot, zone LV, local business district. And to the west is a convenience store, zone LV, local business district. Comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the plan commission for both the rezoning and the special exception. The staff also... the plan commission also approved a number of variances as they were presented. Western Avenue is a major east-west traffic corridor with a wide variety of well-established business and commercial uses in the immediate vicinity. The expansion of the site will provide additional neighborhood services and upgrade Kenmore Street with safer traffic control and pedestrian access. It's the staff's opinion that because of the positive redevelopment of this site in its existing configuration, the variances meet standards for approval. In addition to special exceptions, use meets the standards for approval.
Thank you, councilmembers. Do you have any questions at this time? Thank you so much. At this time, will the petitioner please come before the council, state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Ms. White. Gentlemen of council, my name's Anthony. I'm Zappi. I'm an attorney at law and maintain my offices at 525-82 State Road, 933 North in South Bend, Indiana. I've been retained to represent Arwinder Kar Singh Harjenda and Ricky Singh as it relates to the property located at 3529 Western Avenue. They are also the, uh, they're the owners of 3529 and they are also the contingent purchasers of the property directly to the east at 3527 Western Avenue, which is owned by Barbara Ducker. The property at 3527 of Western Avenue does have a vacant house and a garage. As part of our proposal, that would all be removed and torn down to facilitate the canopy and two gas pumps. The, uh, the total area of the two lots combined is approximately one quarter of one acre. There is an existing, uh, convenience store, approximately 1,700 square feet on the property. The gasoline pumps and nine parking spaces are proposed and the housing garage will then be removed. You may know that the property is located on the northeast corner of Western and Kenmore. We are seeking this evening a zoning modification from mixed-use to local business, with special exception for the gasoline pumps, which would be legally permissible. As the staff indicated, to the, to the east, there's a vacant house and the garage, which we'll remove. Farther to the east, there's another vacant piece of property. You go across the street to the southwest corner, there is a vacant property. Basically, it's a business district other than the vacated pieces of property. In land acquisition and construction cost, we're looking at between $500,000 to $600,000 of improvements. One of my clients, Mr. Singh, has been involved in the property for five years. He mans the property. In 2010, he purchased the business. So we have a local person, a small businessman, that's built up the business that wants to improve it. We plan on adding a couple additional employees. Since the last time we visited with you, there's been some changes to the property. We went to neighborhood meetings, we listened to the neighbors, and we have reacted, we think, in a positive way as to what they, what they want. We've changed the name. Now it's Ricky Smart. He's done a significant amount of improvements to the inside of the building. He's also added security lighting in and out of the building. He's replaced no trespass and no loitering signs on the outside of the building. Any problems, the police are notified immediately. He wants to be a good citizen. The proposal that we, uh, as far as our expenditures on the inside of the property, we'll have a new walk-in cooler, a new food area, a new ATM machine, and a new drinking pot. We will replace the store fixtures and countertops. There'll be installation of more interior and exterior security cameras, addition of a security officer, which is there on the weekends, that we regularly maintain. The security system will be accessible to the South Bend Police Department whenever they would need to utilize that for whatever reason may be necessary. We want to be a good citizen. We've met with the neighbors on several occasions. Mr. Dan for talking about the most recent meetings, but basically, some of the things that they wanted to see done, and I'm going to get into that a little bit later as it relates to our commitments. As far as the exterior of the building, we're going to be removal of the street parking, basically, and a new parking will be added to the site. There'll be installation of perimeter screening and security fencing, installation of exterior lighting around the building, parking area and the canopy areas. And the ca... uh, the dumpster, trash dumpster will be fully enclosed and there'll be installation of new landscaping trees and shrubs along the west side of the building. At the time of our plan commission meeting, we offered the following written commitments. And, uh, they are as follows. And basically, these commitments came from the dialogue that we had with the neighbors in, in several of those meetings. Commitment number one. Hours of operation of the convenience store gas dispensing facility shall be limited to 6:00 AM till 11:00 PM daily. Originally, a year ago, when we came before you, we were hoping to have a 24-hour operation. Number two. No liquor sale, beer, wine sales of any type at the convenience store. Number three. The convenience store and gas dispensing facility shall be required to maintain a 24-hour security monitoring system with interior and exterior cameras, with said system accessible by the South Bend Police Department or any law enforcement agency. Commitment number four. The convenience store and gas dispensing facility shall be required to maintain posted no loitering signs on the exterior of the facility. Commitment number five. The convenience store and gas dispensing facility shall be required to maintain in a working fashion exterior security lighting, which will be placed around the building, parking area, and in the canopy area where the gas pumps are located. These are commitments that run with the property. My client has no interest whatsoever in selling this business, but should anyone have any concerns that if there's a sale of the business, what happens to these commitments? The commitments, as your legal counsel will tell you, will run with the property. These commitments came, again, after significant dialogue with the neighbors. We believe that the expansion of the site will provide additional neighborhood services and upgrade Kenmore Street with safer traffic control and pedestrian traffic. We look at this as a very positive development from the, from the, uh, from the standpoint of what it is now as compared to what we think we can make it with the significant dollars that we're willing to invest. A special use exception meets the standards of approval of a special use exception in that the new pervion and sidewalks will support the public safety. The expansion of an, uh, of an existing business shall not affect any values in the area and the general character of Western Avenue is a commercial corridor with mixed business and commercial use. In May of, uh, this past year, May 21st, 2013, we did have a public hearing toward the Area Plan Commission. They did unanimously recommend abramally to this body approval of our request. I've had an opportunity to drive a number of times as recently as, uh, yesterday on Western Avenue between Illinois and Falcon Street. My client is willing to expend between $500,000 and $600,000 and in that area, I saw not one dime being invested in Western Avenue. I have here with me my client, uh, the manager of the operation. Also, Mr. Danch is going to make a presentation on his behalf also as it relates to the site plan and the council members. If you have any questions after that time, certainly try to answer those questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, we're here with Dan Hearn Associates, 1643 Thomas Drive, through the South Bend. Also, we're presenting to petitioners. Tony had mentioned, and what we had given council this afternoon, was preliminary site plan for all the improvements for Ricky Smart. And if you take a look at that, as we have said before, we are making substantial improvements. We're adding additional landscaping area along Kenmore Street. We're adding fencing along the north boundary line and the east boundary line. That fencing will be a six-foot-high vinyl fence. As Tony had mentioned, the existing garage that's on the site now will be removed. Existing home to the east will be removed. And the site plan reflects the additional parking spaces. It would actually be on-site as compared with the parking cabin right now on the west side of the building. And in exchange for that, what's happening is we're adding additional trees and landscaping along that entire west side. We're adding additional landscaping along the front of the building. Access to the site will be off of Western Avenue and also off of South Bend Street. We have had this site planned review with the city commissioners' offices as well. They are satisfied that the layout, the building, the gas pumps would work well at this particular location. We've done the best we can with the amount of land that is available. This will get all the parking onto the site per the ordinance. As we had also mentioned, we'll have children lighting that is presently not on-site right now. There are sunlight fixtures on the exterior of the building. By having this rezoning, we will have substantially more lighting on the site. That was a concern that some of the residents had. And as Tony had mentioned, it will be on-site. And the security system will be a lot of the access by the South Bend public as well. We had met with the neighborhood association, we recently had a meeting, six, showing this site plan, which we had also added. It was not part of our previous provision before council was we added the commitment to this Tony Williams to be down. We had mentioned the local property, that means those that are in force within the city of South Bend, building department, but also the indoor associations as well. So hopefully, that will help alleviate some of the concerns. You can add your personal comments.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions other to petitionables?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start from this and go all the way down. Councilmember Dieter.
Thank you, Chairperson White. Uh, the first question, I don't know if Mr. Zappi would have to answer that with the, uh... The owner during your commitments, uh, would you make a commitment, a written commitment, and then I'd have to ask Christian, what happens if that's violated? Not to sell rots, clips, bombs, pipes, or rolling paper, any other kind of drug paraphernalia? Would he submit to that? I don't even believe... Believe? We'll leave, but ask him. Okay. Secondly, uh, the commitment of not selling single cigarettes, cigars, so on and so forth? And the other one is knockout merchandise that's already licensed, that they're still selling to store? So those are the three things that I... I didn't understand. Licensed merchandise, hats, shirts, t-shirts, should are licensed in other, uh, other places? Unlicensed. Unlicensed at that store, but I don't believe that I have permission to sell certain academic institutional merchandise. So those would be the three commitments that I would, I would see now. And then, I guess, I don't know, can she answer during that? If a commitment is violated, what happens?
Now, we'll bring the... Okay, Councilmember...
I'll start commenting.
Councilmember Davis.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Tony Zappia. Um, you shared that in your tour, not one city dime is being invested, uh, not any dime is being invested over in the Western Avenue area. Could you please, um, elaborate a little bit more on that? And what documents that you are using to justify that statement?
My two eyes, one to observe. Good. Very good. I just drove the area to see if I could see any new money needs and any new development. And I drove between Falcon and Illinois. I drove maybe six or seven times. I did not see any new construction, any improvements being made in that area, that short area. What I did notice though were several ordered up buildings, just like there is close to my client's property. Thank you.
Councilmember... Councilmember Furley?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Sure. If this doesn't happen, what will happen next with the store? I'm just trying worst-case scenario. Worst-case scenario, we will, we'll not be able to make any of the improvements over to the site plan, to the interior and to the exterior of the store. None of the improvements would be made, and he would continue to attempt to make a go of it, like he has for the last three or four years. But there's not going to be the improvements. Won't be able to hire an additional employee. I'm sorry, sorry. Okay, um, this is probably more so for Ricky then, or Mr. Singh more than anybody else. Is there a high volume, or do you see a high volume of, uh, South Bend Police Department cars, buyer establishment, or even like code enforcement, particularly coming in and looking at certain things that may potentially be out of code?
Ricky Singh, 3529 West Western Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46619.
Ricky, Councilman Davis wanted to know, I hope you heard his question, but what do you want to know? You noticed a lot of South Bend police vehicles around your establishment? And you noticed a lot of code enforcement around your business area, for any reason?
Right now, right now, just South Bend police, they come like every week. They sure everything is okay, like, you know, they patrol every week, you know, get sure everything okay around here, South Bend police.
You don't see anything unusual or anything else?
No, sir.
Now, is this Mark, the sign about the patrolling of the area?
Yeah, they be doing patrol, like, they be starting away every two weeks, every week, you know, get sure everything okay, you know, they take an old name and address, who they talk to.
Okay. Um, what type of food is currently being sold and does it sell out?
Frozen food?
Yeah, what type of food do you sell?
Just frozen food right now.
Okay, and, um, and I wish that Scott Ford was here. Have you even considered going to a different property that may be on Western Avenue that may be able to accommodate all what you're wanting to have happen? No? There is, uh, not that any properties available? No, it's not, but there's one on the corner of Sheridan and, uh, Western Avenue that was an old 7-Eleven many years ago that potentially could potentially play out in this scenario given the gas pump situation and the neighborhood organization and proximity to the gas station on the corner of Falcon and Western Avenue. That's the reason why I'm asking.
Yeah, good. Couple things, depending on the zoning, if we still have been before this council, even at 7-Eleven, that depends on what has happened with changes in the ordinance system with one of you. But also when you guys, uh, additional expenditures on one, selling this property and then buying that other property could be horrible.
Well, that's what I was asking about Scott Ford, our community investment director. I thought that maybe you'd be here. You know, in, in, in interest of the dollars that you guys were just talking about, of being a fine about $600,000, not going to waste or being in a situation that they couldn't be used as the investment ended in Western Avenue corridor because it's sorely needed. And that's why I was asking that question, because that could potentially go out in a win-win situation from, uh, it's a great problem in the neighborhood organization, uh, area, but it's still, the demographic that he obviously patronizes him could potentially still make it there. And if the city in some way, separate form, we had a plan, then there could be another idea of, you know, trading properties, or whatever we do to make sure those deals happen, could happen, but again, that fear is no one's here.
And we haven't had any discussion with the city or have anybody contacted us saying that we had an idea, this program is to buy the city to help our business on the...
No, they have us all the time, sir.
I'm just saying, we haven't done.
Right.
I've had visits, I work with, we're used to calling it the dog. And we haven't seen that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Scott?
Uh, just to follow up on President Dieter's question, just to look a different way. Do you currently have any licensing to sell Notre Dame paraphernalia, any other collegiate sports paraphernalia, NBA, NHL, Major League Baseball, NFL?
We've had regular hats, that's it, and we sell plain t-shirt.
Okay.
And tobacco paper, no paraphernalia.
For just secret paper, sporting hats, t-shirts, jackets, anything like that?
Plain jackets, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, uh, we'll move to the public hearing portion. And this will be the opportunity for anyone that's present that wishes to speak in support of Bill 16 dash 13. We do ask that you come to the podium at this time. You state your name and your address. Anyone wishing to speak in support of Bill 16 dash 13. We ask that you come to the podium now.
Reverend Greg Brown, 1238 Diamond, South Bend, Indiana. I'm a supporter of the Munchy Mark. During the summer, Ricky has used some young adults there. He supplies all the green t-shirts for South Bend, Washington, when it comes time to print them. We need more people to invest in that corridor there. At one time, uh, for Sergeant Mike Miller beginning to run for sheriff, he was working security out there, I used to go out there and visit and talk to the youth out there. I had the guy squad out there. And mind you, that anything that we can do to put our kids or put someone to work in our zip code, I'm for that. And I'm asking the committee, I'm asking the council board to really consider passing this, so that we can make a difference in South Bend, Indiana. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I'm Calpherson McCollie, and I live at 218 South Kenmore, right in the middle of the block with the Munchy Mark slash Rick's Mark. If I might address Councilman Davis's remark about Sheridan. In a previous meeting here, it was like there were too many convenience stores in the area where he's at, but there's even more down that way with, uh...
Are you speaking in support of the project?
Yes. There's more down there, because they put the Dollar General in and everything, and there's more gas stations. We do have a gas station on Falcon. I don't like to use it. I go to Rick's Mark almost every day. I walk my dog down 7 o'clock at night, whatever. I feel safe and secure, never been harassed, no problems. My main concern was the parking situation. And his design for landscaping will rectify that. Because if you're going west on Western and you have to turn right there, going north, it's a, it's a stab in the dark if a car's backing out or kids are crossing or something like that and your tail ends up in the traffic. I'm surprised there isn't all kinds of accidents. But his idea for the landscaping would eradicate that. And he does powerfully with communities. There's a lot of foot traffic between the housing project, up and down, all the time on my street. I see it, I live it every day. up and down, all the time on my street, I see it, I live it every day. It's not, if we're trapped, it, he provides a service that is sorely needed, and many people really appreciate it. And when you were questioning about the kinds of food and stuff, he does the same kind of thing that Dollar General or Family Dollar does, not just frozen, there's refrigerated. I go there to get butter when I eat it, or bacon for breakfast. So he has a variety of things there, and I believe that we have to support the small businessmen that are already in existence, because you cannot attract a big corporation into that neighborhood with big plans. So I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? We ask that you come to the podium.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm, I'm, I'm staying apart, huh, I think it would be really nice for him to have this, because it's not no other store we could go to, sad, safer, sad, safer lot, program, Martin, and this store, it'd be a lot to the neighborhood, because it's a lot of kids from the stay apart home who go to Rick. I've never seen no jobs or anything come up out of there, I haven't seen no standing around there. I go there almost every day, and I don't see anything wrong with it, and I hope it will pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak in support, we do ask that you come to the podium. Anyone that stand behind this gentleman right there.
You, you, excuse me, you used to tell Mike?
Hey, right.
You used to, yeah, that might be the...
You used to tell Mike.
Okay.
That's the one. Just remember, he's Henry Hall. I said, two thirty-four North Chicago. I've, uh, worked with much mark, or Rick's mark, and, and it's a convenience store. It's a neighborhood store. He complies with everyone in the neighborhood, everyone loves it. They feel safe walking, driving, coming to there, he tries that. Have every convenience that the neighborhood needs. And by adding a gas station would take the overblow that Falcon Street has, especially on the weekends. On the weekends, people will drive by so that they don't have to stop because of the overcrowdings. And this would be more convenient for the neighborhood. Everyone loves Rick, and he, and, and he loves him, and he shows that, the respect that's shown in the neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carl Clark, living at four thirty-seven South Albert Avenue. Uh, I believe it would be a great idea for Ricky to have this. Right, right now, it's kind of hard for the small businessmen just surviving out here alone. And now that we have an opportunity to have a small businessman open up something, start investing in the city, especially over there in that area. I think that one person could make a difference and bring more business to that area. So I think it would be a great idea for the council to approve that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wada Stan, and I've been on the, uh, days around, uh, western, uh, they just, they call it. So I, 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 uh, I just retired after, they didn't come out here for the, uh, what, for seven years. And, uh, the whole time I go there, even before he got the Nick Mark, the other, so I was there when he hit it, Kentucky Fried Chicken, uh, all that stuff, uh, they need the pound of potato right on top. When you got cheese, then you can, uh, 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 they the nine five U can jump if I run out to the, uh, run out the Wal-Mart, or, or Shop and Center, or whatever it is, to buy some potato chip. They, I give them a dollar to, they right, go right down the street, and, uh, get potato chip apart where they want, you know, uh, most everybody, they, oh, they know you, if your kids get out of line, they might have tell you that same pattern, when you go to the store, they'll revive you. So they really need...
Thank you. And now we'll move to those wishing to speak in opposition to this bill, Bill sixteen dash thirteen. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? We ask that you come to the podium. Each and every one wishing to speak in opposition, please come to the podium now. We do ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Jacob Hughes, two-two-eight-one-five Harsher Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six two eight. Uh, my name is Jacob Hughes, I am the, uh, the African Prevention Coordinator of the St. Joseph's County Mountain Coal Coalition and help promote it there. I'm here to give you a statistical understanding, um, and research-type understanding on, um, the effects of corner store, uh, gas stations. We have a lot of research and analysis, uh, that gives us an understanding that a lot of times culture is influenced by the foods that we eat. Now, this is a, a real big, uh, undertaking for the coalition, because we specifically focus on community, um, specifically communities that deal with a lot of disparities and don't have access to fresh fruits and vegetables.
Mr. Jacob, you're speaking against the project?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Um, and, uh, and the reason why I was speaking against the, uh, the project is culturally what corner store gas stations have done. Um, I'm speaking, not specifically, um, even talking about, you know, just against it, but there needs to be regulations and stricter regulations on, on this, uh, on this, and this is per, um, the Minority Bill Coalition. Corner stores are located throughout the urban community and are readily accessible. I suppose, uh, that corner stores provide are high in sugar and salt, or they are canned packaged with long shelf lives. We also understand that, um, the food that are available in corner stores are not only unhealthy, but costly as well. On an average, a person will buy an item that is approximately three hundred and fifty-seven calories per visit. I, um, have a fact sheet that discusses a lot of, um, um, the disparities and, and health issues that, that are with these corner store gas stations, and, and if you're talking about accessibility, I'm going to talk about our youth, you know, the youth, fifty percent of youth, um, go to gas stations, these corner store gas stations before school. Forty-eight percent of these students go after school. And let's think about what they're eating. A lot of the foods are, are high in sugar, four hundred calories, you gotta think in what they're getting, uh, and, and what they're seeing when they go in these stores. They're seeing drug paraphernalia, they're seeing the, the, the tobacco products, uh, or the, the tobacco advertisements on, on, right on the front of these corner store gas stations. And you have to understand that over nine billion dollars are put into advertising, uh, when it comes to, um, tobacco. So you think about these kind of things, and you have to, you have to understand that, that, uh, these gas stations are doing more, um, harm than good, especially with the lack of regulation. A lot of research shows that, uh, that there, uh, is a, uh, stopping goals in, in, in corner store gas stations are perceived as generators, generators of violence, in part, um, because of onsite sales of alcohol, drug paraphernalia, and illicit drugs. So you have to think about that as well. Many residents lack personal transportation and rely heavily on small and medium-sized food stores in their neighborhoods. Many of these stores lack variety of healthy food options and are usually more expensive than larger stores. In addition, there are many carryout and, uh, fast food restaurants in the city that offer bright foods and high calorie foods, ones on the surface. Absolutely. Uh, so, with that being said, um, it is our educated, uh, honest opinion, uh, that corner stores need stricter regulations, uh, so that they can provide a service to the community rather than...
Well, thank you.
And I'll also have fact sheets if you guys want to...
Give it to Mr. Boarding. Thank you so much. At this time, we have five minutes for rebuttal, if there's no one else present wishing to speak
Um, just to address to the, the items, uh, the Counselor Dieter had brought up. We could relax and make the commitment that the Counselor Dieter wanted to add to the five that we already have included without making commitments. So we could relax, how would Counselor Dieter get the wording correct on that six commitment for the items that had talked about? And the gentleman, Mr. Hughes, that was just here. If, if we could do, and assuming the council approves this, this would also give Ricky the ability to add some additional items that may help the residents that Mr. Hughes had just mentioned. As well, right now, he's pretty much unlimited because of the size of the building and what's there. But if the improvements could be done, he could expand what's sold on the, the site for the residents that walk in, or also residents that drive there. Do you have any questions for us, we could relax?
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is closed, council members. Uh, I'm going to go down the row and see if you have any questions before we're asked for a motion regarding this bill. Councilmember Scott?
No questions.
Counselor Davis?
Questions or comments?
Comments at this time. You have any comments?
Yes, I do. Um, I'm just really disappointed, uh, on a number of fronts right now, and, uh, and it has everything to do with a culture of poor people fighting poor people. You know, uh, there's a, a great opportunity for someone to invest, uh, loads of money to an area that sorely needs the investment, but we clearly are not gaining the support that we need, and asking for the support, especially because of this issue right here since November of getting or, or adopting a plan for Western Avenue. Uh, and, and I thought that maybe that, uh, Scott Ford would have, you know, done something a lot faster than, you know, what he did today. However, we're here again, um, looking at saying no to an investment, or not. And what bothers me about all of this is that this really doesn't have to be. Uh, Western Avenue is not vacant, however, it needs some investment. There's always opportunity to allow those investments to happen in areas where it's more conducive. Uh, one example was again, uh, Western Avenue and Sheridan Street, where you had an old Seven-Eleven store. The city always participates in, you know, getting people to move to a certain location because they're trying to expand their business for the benefit of the city. And when we get here, it's almost like a situation where no one wants to touch it, just want to see it crash, or see who votes against it, and it becomes politicized. And, and that's my, my, my biggest disappointment, because there is a community that I serve directly, the second district, that is crying for an investment, and you have two groups. One's saying no, one's saying yes, because, and now, instead of providing a win-win scenario, the administration somehow comes up missing in, in the, in the whole situation. And this has been since November. This just didn't happen. And so, it, it bothers me that we're not here for the people. That, that's my issue. We're not here for the people. We need them, we need the investment, and the services that's needed in the area. Only off the end, uh, I think Mr. Hughes, and I've been reading with a, a, a group of folks, including him, and I think I, you know, said this out loud before in the past months, about how we do need stricter regulations on some of these many bar stores. If you go into any other ones, E K B one over on the, uh, going towards the South High School, the South School, uh, one is in Dr. Perkins, uh, area on Howard Street, you have things that are being sold in those stores, again, that are promoting, uh, the lifestyle that we don't want any of our kids be involved in. And so, how do we continue to allow those things to exist and promote a culture of destruction? You know, and so, I'm disappointed again, because it seems to me that we don't want to work at these things for the improvement, we just politicize them, and, and then, if they let us power, oh, let's figure it out, or let's, let's try to add this and add that to it. It doesn't work. It doesn't work. I am sorry to Mr. Seame, I told him prior to this meeting that if the neighborhood organization, um, uh, required me to vote against it, then that's what I would do. And that has been the conversation with them from the beginning of, of time, or with the situation. And so, I want to do my job for the people that I work for. However, if we want to continue to see South Bend suffer, we're going to continue to make these bad decisions and not plan out. If we want to see South Bend flourish, then we need to go about it in such a way that it makes sense. And that requires the mayor to be involved, his partner to be involved, and the council people that are sitting at this table to be involved in more of a positive manner. We can't continue to take a backseat to this stuff. This is going to hurt that community, either way or else.
Counselor Furley?
I commend you for investing five to six hundred thousand dollars in an area, as Mr. Zappia states, that certainly needs investment. The businessman puts in businesses to make money. They have to have a modicum of crime reduction, they have to have schools, that's where businesses go, where you have a safe environment. And I commend you that you're willing to invest out of our money to help the citizens of South Bend.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, um, a couple of things I'd like to address. I was in a little concern, even though this is not the nature of, of the full discretion tonight regarding the harmful results of gas station cars. Um, I don't like the premise of that, because of the fact that in our quote-unquote more affluent neighborhoods, we may have some, um, stores that are well-done, but they sell alcohol, they sell cigarettes, at a lot of our, um, Walmarts, Kane Marts, and every other places. I mean, they sell it in all different places, and, I mean, you see where the liquor is on those stores, it's right next to sometimes the party stuff and all these other things, so, I mean, I don't... Over the last few weeks, as we look at the concept of, um, used cars versus new cars, and convenience stores versus these other ones, I've been thinking about this, the tone of, well, yes, I see this, but we also have unhealthy foods at some of the other stores. Um, I can go down a list of all of that, and all, and every, of any single store, so, just to single out the convenience stores, I hope that as the minority of the coalition will widen their thought and not just deal with that, because that could be an area of, we've accused red herring kind of stuff for, um, um, housing, I think they can do that all for convenience stores. Back to this issue, um, I think Counselor Davis is, is right on this one, in terms of, whichever way we're going to guide, in fact, some of you, when you shared your address, um, you were, you live in sixth district, because right across the street is sixth district. And some of you shared your address, and right across the street is second district, because we service the same population right there. And so, I've had people who are definitely against it, and people are definitely for it. Um, and Mr., um, Delita, Mike's here, and, um, who's here, who's, um, Mr., um, like, Ruth's here. I too was hoping that we could come to some understanding with, um, the administration that helping us out with this one, because, um, this is, um, this is not a interesting, this is a tough case, as Mr. Dance, you talked about today, we shared that today. And, um, hmm, so I just wanted to share that, um, I'm still, I have a few more minutes before we make that final decision, because that's what my head is. I couldn't, I couldn't come in here, I recognize what the neighborhood group wants me to do, but I personally also wanted to hear you all. And as much as I respect the neighborhood group tonight, I'm kind of interested, and I'm shocked I never hear this afternoon, but, uh, this is going to run me some well tonight. And, um, you all, the, I see you all, a whole group of you all showed up here tonight, which I applaud you all, because you have a stronger case tonight than you have. And I'm, Mr. Zappia, I want to thank you for making some of the adjustments that we asked for last year. I like to see that you all have made a lot of adjustments. And so, um, that has been important for me. I'm going to take the last few seconds I have to think and be quiet, and then, um, see what my other colleagues have to say.
Counselor Ford?
Sure, uh, this is tough, I certainly want to support this investment. Asked reservations because of neighborhood concerns, um, was hoping in the interim from when you first presented that you might be able to garner support from the neighborhood organization. Um, was also disappointed in the fact that this store was cited for, for code violations and selling individual cigarettes since the initial petition. Um, however, I would urge you, if this doesn't pass, to continue with working with the neighbors, and, uh, I just don't want to see this investment disappear. For some reason, this store, uh, doesn't go your way tonight. Um, you know, continue working with the neighborhood organization, hopefully you'll be able to invest.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you. Sheriff Person White, uh, I guess, am I able to ask, um, regarding of a commitment that is not fulfilled what the ramifications would be?
Yes, and... Yes, and who would you like to have address that question?
Okay. They're conceding, or not conceding, but adding the things that I asked about. And again, that's one of the issues that, the council people, us as a council, there's certain things that we can do. I don't want to lay the blame on and give the administration, they do their work, I do, we do our work, it's our responsibility to go out and do things that we need to get them done. So my question is regarding, on any of these commitments, if, let's say, the commitment on the paraphernalia, road clips, rolling papers, someone goes in and finds that, what happens to the store? If someone could answer that question? Is it shut down, boarded up, is it a fine? Because we're gonna make these commitments, they need to be set in stone. And I don't want, and I trust Mr. Dance and Mr. Zappi and Ricky, but if we make these commitments and you can't sell it, and then they're selling it, will you shut them down? Will you lock the door? What do we do?
When it comes to things like that, I don't know. To be honest, the Plan Commission, we heard those, a similar list of commitments, I think those first five that they, that Mr. Zappia originally wrote out today, the Plan Commission heard those as well and chose not to make those part of the petition. The Plan Commission, I don't think has any enforcement detail, it would be the city...
How about I ask, since you left to put on the spot, but I am our city attorney, I mean council, corporate attorney.
Corporate?
Corporate council.
Councilmember Davis, you're asking that our...
I'm just trying to get, okay, if they're gonna commit to these and we vote and it passes and they don't adhere to that, what happens?
Thank you. So I'm gonna say, I'm trying to...
I'll give a preliminary recommendation subject to the corporal council. The proposed written commitments that Mr. Zappia and Mr. Dance have proposed specifically set forth in case two, that they're enforced by the city of South Bend, number one, number two, by the council, and number three, by owners within a three-hundred-foot radius. My interpretation that is that the law department would be the first department, and I would not speak on behalf of the law department, but that is how I would interpret it, if there is a violation.
So if it's interpreted, what's the outcome of that interpretation? There's some...
Crystal, will you please come to the podium?
Thanks for being here.
First of all, Briscoe, Corporation Council, Penn City Building, twelve floor. We could be the enforcement mechanism. I would have to look into it and see what our remedy would be. I have not looked at the document to see if we do have a built-in remedy, because this is something that is open to amendment and certainly to put that in there. If the council will be more comfortable with that, I would prefer to do it that way instead of shooting at the hill and saying there could be a remedy, but we don't know what that remedy is. So if the department, legal department wants to enforce that, then we can accept a remedy.
Okay. Well, that's the dilemma I have because I don't want to vote for something where I've asked for commitments, but there's nothing to add to it.
If I could just add a point of attention, based on what Mr. Zappia and Mr. Dance also talked about, we would have to address that no drug paraphernalia, single tobacco items are not of marginalist, that they're sold on premises or any property. But then also, based on what was said at prior committee meetings with regard to the name change, that is also an area that might want to be addressed in the written commitments because that was a point of attention that we had.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to this point because we're at the council level, we're asking questions, but I want to make sure that we do move forward and all the questions that would be addressed, we probably can address or have answers for those at this particular time.
And really, I would recommend that you have to have the written commitments first before you can say guidelines on the entire one.
Councilmember Davis?
Well, based on what our attorney just shared with us, can we, in a sense, would it be wise then to delay this for two weeks and get all that language written out of the way?
Would it be preferable to ask that of the petitioners so that we could work with them jointly?
We could do that so that, I guess, for the wording or adding, Ricky Martin, your counsel, if he wanted to do, most of the time, and I don't want to step on the legal department, but usually, if there is something that happens as part of the zoning process, it would also be a violation of the zoning code. And usually a stipulation that we do that, if there's a fine, if it gets involved with that, whether it's daily or weekly or whatever, that's usually how the zoning violations were stipulations.
I'm gonna ask, at this time, I'm gonna ask at this time that our council attorney would give us advice in regards to how we should move forward. And then secondly, Councilmember Davis, prior to that time, you have another question?
What is this all, based on that, on what he just shared? When we look at the wording that he is looking for, what she's sharing from that standpoint, again, I would encourage that any of the concerns that you heard tonight, that we can put that in there because I think that's gonna even help the concerns that we heard from the neighborhood organizations and everything else. Because that was in my particular, based on the conversation we had this afternoon, about the long history that we have had together and why this happened. And I think having that, what President Deter said, while our council helps us to have clarity.
So we could, we could do that, we'll tack down that, nail down the specific wording for the written commitments and to have that as the fine. What we'd ask council to do, because I'm only gonna, just want to make sure I understand, so what we would do is come back in two weeks, give you that document, let you vote on that, the publisher has been closed, again, we would...
Can you give it for two weeks?
Well, yeah.
What's up with you?
The preference would be that any written commitments be executed prior to...
No, that's what I mean, so that at the next meeting, but we would have it before then. So it's not gonna take us two weeks to review it. But I'm assuming that you're gonna have it at your next meeting?
Yes.
That would be a number approval for just for the council vote.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure that everyone has asked all their questions. And Councilmember Davis?
Yes, thank you. One thing that I have, just comes to my mind, there is a really, really bad herd line that's out there, you know what I'm talking about? Yeah, this really, really bad herd line right there, where it's being strangled into like one main right before you get to that corner.
Okay. Are you talking about Western Avenue?
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. We're clear on that one. And my question is that how do we prevent any traffic confusion or accidents or jams because people may be turning in to go to the gas station? Because they will be going to the gas station if this goes through.
He's correct.
It's a really, really bad, I don't know who did it and why it was a good idea, I don't, I don't, but we're here now. And that really needs to be addressed. That needs to be addressed.
We would work that out with city engineering, assuming zoning gets approved. We have to come back and work with the building department to do what's called final site plan. And that gets reviewed by the city departments one last time before any other senior documents. So that, if you take care of that.
At this time...
I'd like to make a motion to continue sixteen thirteen to the twenty-second.
Did move a second at all, those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote. Those opposed, the motion carries. Would like to take everyone for your input, for your suggestions, council members, your recommendations as well, and we look forward to our July twenty-second meeting. Now I entertain a motion regarding Bill eleven dash thirteen.
I'd like to make a motion to continue eleven thirteen to seven twenty-two.
Did move a second at all, those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote. Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Boyd, will you please give a second reading to Bill thirty dash thirteen?
Public hearing on a grid to vacate the following district, property, streets and alleys in the area of government by sample street, high street, and railroad tracks.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill to the full council with a favorable report.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I do believe we have two petitioners before us that would like to share with us this bill. We ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, council. My name is Michael Meekum, city engineer. I look at the, like that? Okay. My name is Michael Meekum, city engineer, work on the thirteenth floor of this building. Before you is the proposal to vacate the alleys as shown on the record and in this map before you on the east side. The purpose of the vacation of the alleys is to facilitate the building and construction of a new fire training facility that is proposed. There are several alleys and just a moment if I could explain it to you. The alleys we're showing green, those alleys, we're proposing to not only vacate, but to relinquish the easements of those alleys because there are no utilities in those alleys. We have petitioned those utilities to release those easements. On the west side of the proposed site, there's a red line and that is an electrical easement. The electrical easement is to provide electrical power to the billboard there, it's an illuminated billboard, and they need electrical power. The other red line in the middle of the plot is for Verizon easement. Verizon has a facility on the southeast side of this lot and this underground facility is to support that facility. Also, the middle of the facility is a blue line, that's a water line. We propose to leave the water line there for obvious reasons to us, but it's to provide water for the fire suppression activities of the training. On that water line, we'll put a couple more fire hydrates to help out the training facilities. And that's, the proposal is to vacate those alleys. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Cock?
Stephen Cox, South Bend Fire Department Fire Chief, twelve twenty-two South Michigan Street. Basically, Mr. Meekum hit on every item there, so let's hear the council ask questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, you have any questions?
Negative.
Two petitioners?
Uh-huh. This is PGPA.
Thank you so much. At this time, we move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of Bill thirty dash thirteen? See no one. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed, council member?
More for the record. Second.
Did move a second at all, those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote. Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Boyd, will you please give second reading to Bill twenty-two dash thirteen?
Public hearing on a grid of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, on ending chapter five, Article Three, Sections five through fifteen A and D of the South Bend Municipal Code, is under new Article Ten, titled Honey Bee Keeping Regulation and Amendment Sections two dash one twenty-three Schedule of Origins and Code.
Is there a motion to hear the substitute version of this bill? Did move a second at all, those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote. Those opposed, the motion carries. The House of Public Safety Committee held a meeting and public hearing on substitute Bill twenty-two dash thirteen, and we send this to the council with a favorable recommendation. We do have petitioners before us, state your name and address, and give us a brief summary of substitute Bill twenty-two dash thirteen.
Hello, my name's Tim Scott, Southern Forest Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
It's busy.
Speaking to... The city of South Bend is appalled with anticipation of this bill, and we have a sweet, sweet meal for you. So right now, I'd like to turn it over to my co-presenters, Chair Stewart and Vince Barletto.
Thank you. I think I'm good. Let's change it up on the... Bees have become a problem in our community. We're losing them. In Indiana, one of thirty-five counties that has suffered from colony collapse, which is a potential global disaster for food. Most recently, we've had a fifty-five percent loss in our honeybee population. Bees pollinate over a third of our produce and they give us honey. The Indiana State Code of Dross is managed by our honeybees and is dedicated to increase education, outreach, and protection. In order to manage this natural resource, the city of South Bend, Peas Bees, and Unity Gardens have come together in collaborative efforts to educate our community more. First, we placed ties at the South Square Unity Garden in two thousand and twelve. Then, we began formal classes of bees one-on-one, beekeeping, and our three-hand-on beekeeping classes. And when the council expressed interest in being part of the solution, we facilitated their knowledge base as well. And we began a team approach to managing swarms and protecting the natural resource of honeybees. Managing swarms, of course, decreases the risk of having bees make their own nest places and people being stung. Our community interest group, the front page of the Tribune highlighted the urban bees, and the national news picked up the story highlighting South Bend efforts to encourage urban beekeeping. It ran in USA Today and the newspaper in California. And the bees continue to thrive here, with the population at the South Square Unity Garden increasing four hundred percent. I want to highlight the opportunity for South Bend to gain some national recognition for our progressive stance on protecting our valuable resource, bees. By reducing barriers to urban beekeeping, the city is in a position to capitalize on this national attention that's already been enjoyed. Especially timed with our recent publicity we've gotten on bee losses in a number of areas in the United States. The update in the bee ordinance has the potential to catapult South Bend as the reputation of the hub of the food belt solution. Since the council members were named in the AP Press information, you're likely targets for future inquiries. Education and collaborative partnerships for responsible resource management has already begun, and thank you all for the foresight to recognize this opportunity and act on it with Unity Gardens, Peas Bees, and the city of South Bend.
Good evening, councilmen. I will make my presentation short, sweet. My name is Vince Barletto, ten nineteen Upper Place in South Bend. So first of all, why honeybees and why do we care? Just for reference, honeybee population and the pollination is a nineteen-billion-dollar-a-year industry on our food market alone. They actually pollinate one-third of our food. So you could think of it as, if we lose our bees, we lose our food type of thing. Obviously, we all know that you pollinate everything from berries and nuts to other flowers and food. This is a quick graph showing that what we talk about is real colony collapse disorder. We are in a dire situation where we really need to really increase our numbers. USDA has kept numbers on the actual colonies that produce honey, but pollinate the crops and obviously are declining. In two thousand and six, we hit, I wouldn't call it a record, but we're starting to lose anywhere between thirty and ninety percent of our hides on a commercial level. Our food prices are directly impacted by that. The existing ordinance considers bees as an agricultural product. We understand it was written back in the forties. We have an idea, it's probably an effort to remove agriculture out of the city and into rural areas. As such, most farmers had bees at that time, so I just made the list. So it's, bees are legal in the city now, but you must have five acres and several other restrictions, so essentially, you know, about a dozen people could have hides in the city. The existing ordinance just isn't working. With efforts from Peas Bees, Unity Gardens, and Tim Scott, we've developed and amended ordinance that will allow the average resident of South Bend the opportunity to provide sustainable foods, introduce the pollinators, and provide an opportunity for families to educate themselves about the importance of healthy living and hands-on learning level for them as well. But especially, we want to thank the city for their extensive beautification investments regarding new flowers and trees and other flora that creates a very conducive environment for bee growth and their overall health. So as such, one of our objectives is to maintain the bees that already exist and thus reducing any public risk that could be with that. Our goal is to keep this as simple as possible without limiting even the most impoverished citizens. We want to make this available for anybody, no matter their skin. We want to make this available for anybody, no matter their state. So a brief outline, we're limited to honeybees. We're limited to re-updignized bees for obvious reasons. If the property is fenced, we must maintain a four-foot radial clearance from any property line. We also support keeping hives at least ten feet from any public sidewalk. If the property is not fenced in, we also have the same four-foot radius and we will include a barrier, it's called flyway barrier, in front of the hive. Bees tend to fly out just a little bit and they go up. They don't really fly much on the ground too often. So, the barrier will force them to go up and over. In case someone walks through someone's backyard who is not fenced, open backyard, people will walk right through it. One highlight of this is that all equipment and practices will be mandated and approved by the state of Indiana. The state of Indiana does have an apiary division through the DNR, and so we will follow those and those rings around home that's safe. We also strictly enforce the safeguard and the integrity of this bill by introducing fines and possible complete extinction or exhaustion of the hive. So let's face the immediate concerns right away. The, you know, if you're allergic to bees, how this is affecting you? Well, if it doesn't, again, remember that bees are allowed in the city, so they already exist. We already have trees and flowers and other things that are conducive to the growth of honeybees, so we're already here. If you're allergic to bees, I would imagine that your allergist tells you to carry an EpiPen anyways, so you should be already prepared for that. So we're, this really is not affecting that at all. How aggressive for honeybees, they're not, they're very docile creatures, they're not interested in you. They just want to pollinate and get out of your way. If you happen to find a swarm in your backyard, you would do the same thing now as you would do the same thing two weeks ago, irregardless of this ordinance passing or not passing. You would either call the city or you can call one of our guys here and they would come get the swarm. So that's something to worry about. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions over petitioners? Councilor David?
Yes. Should you, two questions, one. First of all, for the record, could you explain why you call them Peace Bees instead of just bees, war bees, sleeping bees, whatever kind of bees you use word? Peace bees, special bees?
Still attack, maybe be attacked by bees.
Could you please explain why you say Peace Bees? Then I have one more follow-up after that.
Alex Wessnyak, 25600 Peach Trail, South Bend, Indiana. I am the founder of Peace Bees, and basically, I created this organization when I was in sixth grade to educate the public, whether it's in South Bend and even beyond South Bend, about the importance of honeybees. And the reason why I called it Peace Bees is because I wanted to emphasize their peaceful nature. Honeybees, when they sting you, they die immediately after. It is not in their nature to just attack on a whim for no reason unless they feel threatened, which unless you're stepping on them or swatting at them, that usually doesn't happen. So that's why I wanted to focus on the peaceful aspect of the honeybee, and that's why Peace Bees is so important to this whole ordinance, because the bees aren't going to do anything any different. They're peaceful, they will basically just leave us alone and continue to help all the ways that we know they do.
Thank you. And in my second question, I know you just shared that people who are already allergic to bees should already have their allergist talk to them about it. Hello? Uh, sorry. Um, okay. But is there anything that you think that can, if this is passed tonight, that the Peace Bees groups can do to help to educate people more about how to protect themselves when it comes to others? Because my concern is just to say, well, that, you know, this kind of goes back to what Dr. Ronan was saying earlier, you know, just we're going to be increasing bees and everything else, and so just to say, well, it's not going to affect anybody does not necessarily affect them truly. We're having more bees coming. So what can your group do to help educate more people so they can protect themselves, go get themselves checked, all those kind of things, and have a health-based approach to this kind of situation?
I'm glad you asked that. I think there's value in talking about the fear and making our decisions on fact. Bees are already here, people manage them with allergies. We'll continue to offer at Unity Gardens with Peace Bees free educational opportunities and by raising awareness, we're already, you know, educating the public. They're docile, you know, you don't swat it, we're creating flyway barriers and whatnot. Whereas now, there's been at least five or six swarms that I know of that may not have fenced for and, you know, completely out in the open had we had more beekeepers and were homes for those bees. So I think that's opening up the discussion, having public awareness, et cetera, will absolutely take care of that as well, and swarm management.
I'd appreciate that, and I thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions from council members?
Negative.
If not, we move to the public, I'm sorry, Councilor Davis?
Sure. Really quick, when we did the chicken deal, it's always said for like a niche, groups of folks, and since not a lot of folks have gotten permits to have chickens in their backyard. How many folks do you intend or people do you think that will even sign up to be beekeepers?
Now, to discuss a little earlier, and I'll defer to Tim to discuss the specific numbers, but one thing I do want to highlight is the initial investment prohibits most people from being beekeeper. But here's some numbers for you.
Statistically speaking...
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Tim Ives, 27151, State Route 23, North 100. Statistically speaking, there's about one in ten thousand people in the United States that are beekeepers. The Michigan Beekeeper Association, they currently run about a hundred and fifty members in St. Joe, Elkhart, Marshall, and Stark County, which is about one in six thousand to one in seven thousand people. City of South Bend has about a hundred thousand people, so you're looking at, going by the averages, ten to fifteen, which also coincides with up the amount of people that we have in the Peace Bees schooling at the present moment. And as Sarah pointed out, the cost of getting a couple of beehives, getting the bees, putting up the flyway barriers, you're looking at about twenty-five hundred dollar outlay. It's not like you're going to spend a hundred dollars and get all set up and chickens.
So how does that help on a grand scheme of things, that your argument is that we need more bees, we need more folks to invest in this particular sustainable use, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? But now you're telling me that everyone can't do it, or it's a dollar amount that you have to have in order to play a game, play ball? So how does that, how does that, how does that, why is that conversation congruent with folks who really need to be part of sustainable living or having better access to healthier foods?
There's nobody stopping anybody from getting bees.
No, I didn't say that. The dollar mark, you just said the dollar mark does. That's what you said. I didn't say that.
Well, as you know, Unity Gardens offers access to beekeeping for people on site because obviously, we have bees, we're open, and we do the education. So one of the things we're able to do is let people manage hives there.
Okay.
So that's one way that we give away about the access.
Okay, at this time, we'll just begin your presentation. Councilor Josh?
Do you have a follow-up on that one? If you can. So therefore, if I'm at my house and I don't have the two thousand, five hundred dollars and I want to be a beekeeper, then I have access to coming over to the Unity Garden, set up the bees or whatever, because again, I agree with, from the average person who just cannot come up with all that money, but they want to participate, then what?
It works to it, too. Not only that, if you want, you know, plant radishes or tomatoes, we're all there, too. You know, I mean, volunteers is how we run everything we do, by sharing the work, sharing, you know, et cetera. But we often need biodiversity in our bees, and so Peace Bees and Tim Ives with Ivy Hives do need locations for bees, so that works as well. There's a lot of different opportunities in beekeeping that, you know, people can work together once they are educated on how to keep bees.
So you say they need locations so they can come out to people's homes and do that, too? Or what, what are you saying?
They're all nodding yes. We're all greeting there.
Tim Ives, 27151, State Route 23. The way Unity Gardens got set up with bees is both I and Wessnyak set them up with bees. I have about a hundred and fifty colonies of bees. I'm constantly looking for new places to place bees. Anybody willing to want to have bees, I've always worked out, I'll set you up, you buy whatever equipment, and I get my equipment back the following year, you keep your equipment with bees. And that's basically what I've done with Unity Gardens, that's how I set them up with bees. So there wasn't even the initial cost of the bees. My biggest problem every year is the cost of the equipment, because once you start doubling up on a hundred hives, you're looking at fifty to sixty thousand dollars with the equipment. So it's easier for somebody that wants bees, I don't have to buy the equipment, I'm just going sideways on my colony count. I'm able to keep the bees alive unlike the rest of the world.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting. In presenting this bill, we looked at best practices around the country in, you know, the four-foot radius, the flyway barrier, all the protections, the responsibility within having fenced yards and flyway barriers is conducive to everything that we're seeing around the country. This isn't progressive stuff, and I can't shoot amongst this, for this group, but, you know, to me, a Unity Garden is missing one other key ingredient, and that is bees. And I can't say that they can put bees in every garden, but I think it's something that could be attainable down the road, and that is also shared. Talked to Aaron Perry at DT SB, Mark Turner is a beekeeper, and Mark is interested in doing a rooftop hide for educational purposes downtown. So there is a lot of interest, and what we need to do is make sure the law is correct to allow the opportunity for us to grow and for other people to take advantage of this. And, you know, the CCB, colony collapse, the thing that we need is diversity, and that's what we need. We need local bees and you diverse throughout to fight that off. And we ask for your vote positive on this.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of Bill, substitute Bill 22-13? We ask that you come to the podium at this time. Anyone wishing to speak in support, please line up at this particular time. We do ask you to stick your name and address for the record.
Alex Wessnyak, 25600 Peach Trail, South Bend, Indiana, 46614. Now, mind you, my address is not actually in the city of South Bend, however, I feel that I am part of the city of South Bend. I'm a graduate of Washington High School. I still live here at home when I'm not away at Purdue. The city is part of me. And all of the people that I've spoken to in the city of South Bend, over the six years that I've been doing Peace Bees, or over the six or seven years that I've been doing Peace Bees, I've spoken to over thirty thousand people, and at least one in every single presentation has come up and asked me about how I can get started. Oh, well, I live in the city, I can't do that, I don't have five acres. And so it's really heartbreaking for me to see the enthusiasm on these people's faces anywhere from young to old. We've had small children really wanting to get started and not being able to. And part of the thing about bees is they are a community, they work together. If they don't work together, they perish. And so like a person's community, we have to work together as well. And that's what Tim was saying, as far as, you know, we can put out hives at other people's houses, we can continue to teach these classes for free if people want to learn about them, if they're interested in getting started, different things like that. And we try to involve the community in a positive way as well, where many of the times we'll have kids classes, kids will be very apprehensive at first, but towards the end, they're up at the front of the fence at Unity Gardens, they're wanting to come in with the suit on, they're extremely excited because they begin to learn the importance and that, you know, it's really not that dangerous. Another thing that we involve the community with is our very first hives at Unity Gardens, they were actually built by Washington High School. The workshop department built the hives for us and the art department painted them. And so we want to continue to do things like that, but in order to do, to involve the city, they have to be involved in the city. And so just some of those things, I myself am allergic to honeybees. I carry my EpiPen, and I have continued to be a beekeeper just because of the fact that, I mean, I'm also allergic to pollen, but I don't stop smelling flowers. So it's something that I love and I'm not going to stop doing it. And Chicago, a very crowded city, allows honeybees, and they obviously are not having issues with honeybees attacking or people having allergy issues and things like that. So I just, I urge you to consider those type of things when you're making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sammy Brown, I represent Tuesday Night for Baghdad, 415 South Street. I hope the council will vote in favor of this, whether we've got the chickens or birds, not as many bees. And the next thing I want to let you see is us getting on the agenda of the Chase Tower for a fall down on the money worth of that.
Steve Wessnyak, 25600 Peach Trail, South Bend, 46614. Couple of things, when we talk about the cost of getting started, when we throw out these numbers of two thousand dollars or so, that is if you just went out and purchased everything brand new. There are other ways to stay within the state guidelines of a hive. You can make it yourself. There's different styles of hives, ones that are cheaper, they don't work as well, but whereas they don't work as well, they don't grow as big, which may be fine for most people. So we use those as a worst-case scenario when we talk those numbers. There are ways for people to get by on a budget. I've heard people that have become beekeepers for as little as a few hundred dollars because they had scrap wood, they made a smoker out of a tin can, there's ways to do it. Another way, and Tim talked about his ideas, we talked in Peace Bees about doing things of, like a mentorship, where we would put a hive in someone's location, and they learn from us, and over time, maybe through us keeping some of the honey, they pay back for that hive. There's some other opportunities we're looking at to potentially bring jobs, I hate to go any farther with that because it's so infantile, but it does open the door to things that we wanted to do but can't because of the ordinance. And even though we talked about it in council today, I'll throw it out for anyone in the audience that might be a detractor. Insurance is not an issue. We learned that from Cindy, who's another one of our Peace Bees students, you can get a rider on your insurance that you don't need to, without a requirement. 4H does not require any additional insurance nor any other additional liability relief. So again, it's not this horrible thing that we need to be fearful of, it's something that's need to embrace and bring the city forward.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sue Kessel, I'm at 4022 Kennedy Drive in South Bend. I'm a Purdue master gardener, and I'm thrilled that both Unity and Peace Bees and Tim Ives are bringing bees to the area. I want to emphasize, we are down two-thirds. No bees, no food. It's real simple. No bees, no food. And by doing this, we can hopefully bring our bees up to a normal level. We're not at a normal level right now, and I think that's really important. In China, there's such a crisis with their bees that they've got people with paintbrushes going out and pollinating them, and I never want to see us at that point. People say, well, I live in the city, what does it matter if I have bees? You know, that's not the country. Well, the reality is that bees fly three to five miles. So what I do in my yard, if I spray pesticides or I provide flowers in organic areas, I'm benefiting good friends of mine that live not even three miles away that have a farm. So those... So those bees are going to be helping the surrounding agriculture as well. So we need to, to realize that it's not a myopic view. Those bees fly three to five miles and they need areas where they're going to be helping out our, our neighboring farmers. Um, bigger cities also have it and, um, I'm hoping that we're going to be really, uh, great innovators as we have been with Unity Gardens. And, uh, I want to thank you for the opportunity and just remind you that with no bees, there's no food. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask anyone that would like to speak in support and come to the podium after this last gentleman.
1831 College Street, South Bend, in the city. Uh, I would like to speak in favor of the ordinance. Yes, beehives are out there already. Now, I can, I can verify that personally because I had that tree taken down a few years ago, about a mile from downtown. Tree came down, there's a huge beehive in it, had no idea it was there, about 20 feet from the house. So they're out here. Let's, uh, get going.
Thank you. At this time, we move to those, uh, present wishing to speak in opposition to this bill. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we go to, uh, back to the council portion.
Motion for a second recommendation?
Second. Is there a move in second? All of those in favor of, uh, the motion that's been made in reference to Substitute Bill 22-13. I hear your vote, please.
Uh, I vote opposed.
Okay. Substitute Bill 22-13 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation on all of the cases.
Call the row.
One.
There was two or three. Is this one?
Yes.
The other one, there was two, two up there at least two. That's why I said call the row. So call, so call on the substitute version, uh, recommending favorability to, uh, Substitute Bill number 22-13.
Okay, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Furlough.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furlough.
Aye.
President Davis.
Aye.
Our vote is seven to one in favor of the favorable recommendation.
I would not intend a motion to write from the committee as a whole. Move to rule the second and all of those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
The council's now in session, 1341, 3013. Third reading on the bill to vacate the following described property, streets and alleys in the area bounded by Central Street, High Street, and the railroad tracks.
Move for the passage of the bill, 3013.
Second. What's the second, Mr. Wardy? Mr. Henry Davis.
I'm sorry.
Bill 3013.
Right. No, uh.
Uh, Dr. Furlough.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furlough.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
And President Davis.
Aye.
Thank you. Third, uh, 2213. Third reading on the bill of the common council on City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 5, Article 3, Section 5 through 15, AND, of the South Bend Municipal, covered by the inclusion of new Article 10 entitled Honeybee Keeping Regulations and amending Section 2 dash 123, Schedule of Ordinance and Code Violation.
Move for the substitute version of Bill 2213.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor.
Aye.
May I have a position? Now may I have a motion on the amended version?
I move for the, um, passage of Bill, uh, 22-Substitute, uh, 13.
Second.
1341. Dr. Furlough.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furlough.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
And President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furlough.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
And President Davis.
Aye.
Uh, the vote is six to two in favor. Proceed. Proceed to 1341, please.
Uh, six to two, I heard, uh, seven to one.
Oh, I thought, uh, excuse me, I thought, uh, Dr. Varner said his name.
He did.
Yeah.
Seven to one. He's rolled up unless he gave him two.
You're absolutely right. Sorry about that.
Off of me.
Uh, what do we have here? A resolution reconfirming the adoption of the declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 5405 Royal Street, as a residentially distressed area for purposes of a five-year residential real property tax abatement for Tampecos Development LLC.
Motion, 1342, for a public hearing on 1341.
1342.
Second.
There's a motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
May I have a position? Thank you. 1342. 1342. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as Crescent Oaks, Section 2, 2322, 2330, 2338, 2402, 2408, 2416, 2424, 2432, 2323, 2331, 2339, 2405, 2413, 2421, 2509, 2517, Basin Street, 2440, Basin Street, 45511, Running Deer Drive, 2439, Basin Street, 45469, Balboa Park Avenue, as residentially distressed areas for purposes of five-year residential real property tax abatement for Tampecos Development LLC. Thank you. Presenter, please.
Yeah, the community investment committee, uh, met two weeks ago and we sent both 1341 and 1342 forward, favorite, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Harold Eniff, with Davenport Market Consultants at 750 Lincoln Way East in South Bend. I'm here representing Mr. Denny Schwartz, sole member of Tampecos Development, who is also with me tonight. A little history, Mr. Schwartz was originally a silent partner and investor in Tampecos Development. However, on October 4 of last year, uh, he received notice from the other member that he was transferring all of his membership shares to Denny and was locked away from the development, uh, thus leaving Denny as the sole member and owner. Uh, he was not looking for a development to manage, however, in the last several months has assembled a team of engineers, realtors, uh, construction managers, and home builders to advise him on, uh, the proceeding. Has also solicited bids for some common sidewalk and asphalt surface in Section 1 to complete necessary improvements and anticipate that network completed within the month. Originally, this project, uh, was one exclusive builder that likes to build all homes. Now, Mr. Schwartz, it's up to multiple local builders who share the same, uh, quality concerns and, uh, that's what Mr. Schwartz is looking for in the development. Therefore, we respectfully request your approval for a five-year payment for remaining lots in Crescent Oaks.
Thank you. Any questions of the petitioner? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak in favor of 1341 and/or 1342? Seeing none, anyone like to speak in opposition?
Seeing none, council, first may I have a recommendation for 1341?
Move for the adoption.
Second.
Of Bill 1341?
Motion to second, 1341.
Dr. Furlough.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furlough.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
And President Davis.
Aye.
A dot. Thank you. A motion for 1342, please.
Move for the adoption of Bill 1342?
Second.
Uh, Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furlough.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Furlough.
Aye.
And President Davis.
Aye.
A dot. Thank you. If you not have any first readings, unfinished business, may I have a motion to send? Bill 2613 to ZNA for 7/22/13.
Some more.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
May I have a position? Thank you. Any unfinished business before the council?
Um, in terms of to, to make my report for the, um, just an update for everybody with the vote centers now, that's still on new business? Okay, cool. I wait.
Okay. Thank you. Let's proceed to new business. Updates, people on boards, committees, or other council agenda.
Just want everybody to, um, check their emails. We have a list of maps, uh, where the, um, current proposed sites are for the, um, vote centers. Um, you please look in your areas, and there are some areas, as you can see, within the city of South Bend that are lacking. They are under the maybe section. And so therefore, if you have other ideas of where you think a vote center would be in your district, uh, um, if you see them maybe by one of your areas on that list, if you can send your note, there's been some, um, uh, difficulty in contact with some of the places. And so just check your list again to make sure that your particular district or districts that we know are covered to the level that you think should be covered because those are some key issues. They're trying to get this to be done by the end of this year and there's going to be some more data and lists coming out. And as soon as all the letter is there, um, I will notify you. But you're welcome to come to every meeting that I have and share your thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
New business, sure. Um, I'm just, um, really looking for some more information. Uh, Bert Channa Olive has a store.
New business, again, by city code, uh, it would be representative of the council to serve on a committee commission for an update, so it's very good.
I'm not finished.
Oh.
So can I complete? Then you can say if I do, I'm violation. This has to pretend to that. Well, let me finish that and then you tell me what's wrong with that. Okay. Yeah, thanks, appreciate it. Uh, Bert Channa Olive has a, uh, store, uh, again, it's me and my store, uh, and also this Lafayette Avenue for Lafayette Street Building was provided by a side on it. Uh, I'm just really interested in a model citations that have been written by code enforcement as relation to Tampecos. I know this has been in the news a couple of times, uh, one versus the other, but I think that there, there's a necessary that the news happened because something is going wrong. Uh, this gentleman that was, uh, ran over, uh, face was crushed, actually, uh, that's one of the senior stores, late night deal. Is that violation? Uh, yeah. That's a violation. So when do I ask a question about what's going on in the issue so we have information on what's going on?
Well, I would, I would suggest that we email or send a contact with, if it's a court issued a code, it's police issue, it's a police, if it's a corporate council issue, it's a corporate council.
So who differentiates what? Who, uh...
I think the, the chief of staff would be the go-to person who can disseminate any question or any problem, like you're alluding to, which are good questions, to the proper person in the city government who can address this.
So then when the information is sent back to me and it appears to be less than good, then what happens after that? Does it just not get addressed or do I, uh, ask for a committee hearing and it just happens thereafter?
That would be up to you to decide how you do it. I would...
I'm asking because I, this stuff is new to me. I've never had this.
I would refer it to the proper committee that it should be addressed in.
The council person does?
If you do a question to them and you're not satisfied, like it's zoning, zoning, public safety, the Karen White's Committee, to so on and so forth.
So then after that, does that committee chair have the ability to say yes or no to have a public hearing about a particular issue or no?
That's up between you and that chairperson to decide how you want to handle it.
Okay, well, whatever. I just wanted, I'm not done. Um, I wanted to say thank you to the firefighters, the Southern Fire Department. Uh, they did, they did a, a great, a hell of a job out there. A gentleman fell in the hole, covered with dirt. Uh, was out there for, well, probably about more than three hours. I wasn't there five hours, but he was probably there about five hours. But needless to hear, I think that they did a great and excellent service and job. I just want to salute them on that because that was, that was something to see. I, I thought that was just a true show of public service to... As a matter of fact, it wasn't just only the fire department, it was folks from the city, uh, from the, just the city, workers as well as fire department, and just folks that were just even out there all together, uh, people who contacted, et cetera. So that, that was a very, very good deal. And that's it.
There's a floor, anybody wants to talk to this council this time on something that hasn't been on the agenda? Step the microphone, we need your name and address. You have three minutes. If there's something specific that you want the council to follow up, I will sign it to a council member. So when you're done completing, leave the forms up there and I will take care of those.
Jesse Davis, Field Box 10208, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I come to the council tonight, I would like them to investigate what's going on with the double building case that I came up and asked about several times. Um, I was told to, uh, pick up prosecutor, I did that. He guided me to the police department, I went there. Uh, there was a discrepancy in a conversation between myself and the chief and I was told that it was handed over through the city's legal department who apparently the chief wants to handle it in a civil matter. And I'm still getting phone calls from other contractors, people throughout the city, homeowners that are saying that this contractor is still out there being basically forced upon the homeowners. The, the city still always recommends and sends this contractor off the drain cleaning knowing that this guy frauded the city out of over five figures a month. Uh, I handed documents to the police to this effect, I brought them to the council. Yeah, I still heard nothing in the news media, I've heard nothing back from the council, nothing from the chief. You know, why is this guy still being forced upon the homeowners and why is he still, uh, you know, working in our city if he's out there taking the city or the homeowners for that back for money? Uh, also, I want to, uh, on another note, commend the council members and administration people who apparently averted us taxpayers, taxpayers in our city from probably losing several million dollars on a chase tower deal. Uh, I read in the news and several news outlets that the gentleman who was here from Chicago that wanted to purchase that building and wanted the city to, uh, hurry up and kick in millions of dollars for that project, uh, is now somewhere in India because he apparently got $10 million from another city in Illinois and was supposed to rehab a building and that fell through the building's general closure. So I, I think we averted a disaster here and, uh, I want to thank everybody that made sure that that didn't take place.
I'm Sandra Brown, Tuesday, 94, Betty Dull, 415 South Street, South Bend. Uh, I don't know where to start, but, uh, I'm not happy that I've trapped a light in the public. Uh, we had a situation where a neighbor at 230 North St. across the street knocked down in, uh, one of the streetlight poles. They never did the eyes, they did put a cone on it, but, uh, they didn't let the public know how serious it was. But they, they told me if they cut the power to it, it'd knock off the streetlights out from city, I mean, from living to orange, that was that handled properly. Because those, I figured out why, they had a hole there, the kid could've come along, kicked the cone off, whatever, got into it, and, uh, he could've got killed. So that was done poorly. I want to tell the department for 16 years, put their gas department for eight years. So I know all the procedures. Next thing, we got a neighbor at 213 St. Street, uh, deteriorated a neighborhood. They broke into Thomas', uh, garage, that he's trying to sell a home on St. Street. And, uh, they said he's supposed to be crazy. and, uh, they said he's supposed to be crazy, and he might, he might use the word busy to win it. But anyway, this young man at 213 Stady Street, you gotta go to him and talk to whoever it is that needs to be talked to, because he's not going to make it. Not using that word busy at certain young ladies. So we gotta be so, let me go through you a safe. I pray for him.
Good evening. Christopher Huff, 1831 College Street. I was here two weeks ago to present, uh, my displeasure about the condition of the historic city cemetery property, uh, which has been talked about for at least thirty-three years that I remember. Here to present a pro forma and a recommendation to the city council, the mayor, and to the department directors, as I talk a little later on. The public embarrassment and issue, the condition the city cemetery is in very bad condition and is not being appreciated, not just for the heritage and patrimony of the community and the asset as, uh, as an asset to the neighborhood, but potential economic development generator, the local economy has not been, uh, has not been utilized. The cemetery, which is strategically located in the middle of a severely deteriorated neighborhood, uh, which has suffered great physical distress and depopulation distress over the past thirty or forty years, is virtually hidden from the neighborhood as it's surrounded to the east, south, and west by deteriorated properties. The proposal, one demolish approximately twenty-four houses, seventeen of which I've counted are currently vacant and or boarded up or just completely open and not boarded up. And then relocate about ten houses to other neighborhoods and re-stabilize other neighborhoods. This would secure the city ownership of about eight, eight point eight acres of additional land. Then we use and repurpose that nearly secured three hundred and eighty-four thousand square feet of land area as an extension to the existing cemetery to the east, south, and west, basically squared off from Walnut to La Porte to La Salle and down to Col歇 Avenue. This would create, um, the possibility of about eight thousand new cemetery or burial plots. The creation of a substantial and sustainable income stream specifically for the costs associated with expanding the cemetery, costs associated with complete restoration of the cemetery, establishment of a two million dollar permanent cemetery endowment to pay for ongoing perpetual maintenance, and creation of a, what basically called an ecohistoric tourism plan. It would also create a highly visible and proud public facility of significance would help, which would help to re-anchor this neighborhood. Property analysis. Aftermarket analysis, how many...
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I'm going to present this to the city clerk, I'll bring it over, uh, for distribution to the city council, mayor, and the department directors. Thank you.
Welcome again, thank you. Anyone else wants to speak to the council? We are here.